The school board meeting for August 19th to order. And we will have the pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Wagner, the invocation by Ms. Gilliard. So please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, it's in the name of your son, Jesus, that we come today. God, we come trusting and believing. We come to place our cares and concerns in your hands. God, we just continue to pray for safe schools for our children. God, we pray for those that are there to educate them, God, that they will not be distracted, God, by those that may disrupt, that they may not be distracted, God, by being concerned about the safety, but, God, they will be allowed to teach so that our children can grow and blossom. Father, we pray in the name of Jesus for all of the administrators and for the efforts, God, in getting our schools ready for our children to return, for the transportation department, for making sure that our buses are up and running, for our maintenance men that made the school grounds look good, God, we say thank you. With all of that being said, it says simply that it's a joint effort, that it takes all of us working together, pulling in the same direction, and that's for our children. God, we pray for this board, for our families. God, we pray for your guidance as we make decisions, God, that may not necessarily at the time seem right, but, God, we pray that you will help us to vote our hearts and our conscience, and in the end, God, that it will work out for the good for our children. Bless this community that we live in and this country that we live in where we're free, God, to serve, to worship, and to educate our children. Father, we ask all this in the mighty, matchless name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Okay, board, we will move to our presentations. And Ms. Cahann, you are recognized.
Good afternoon, board.
Good afternoon.
I am very excited to share with you a glimpse of our first week of school. This year's opening was a true team effort, from the classroom to the bus loop, from district personnel to campus staff, everyone came together to welcome our students and families with smiles, support, and encouragement. The start of school can be hectic, but what stood out across all of our campuses was a sense of unity, one district working together, putting our students first. So here are just a few moments that capture the energy, the excitement, and the heart of PCSD's first week of the 2025-26 school year. So as you can see, it was a smooth start. We'd like to say thank you to our staff, families, and community for making our first week such a success.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The department is knocking out the park, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, they are doing a great job with their... All right, board, any public comment? All right, no public comments, so we will move to our public hearing on consent agenda. And Ms. Pickens, I'll start with you for anything to pull.
I have nothing to pull.
I don't have anything to pull.
Nothing to pull, sir.
Oh, E8?
E8.
I might...
He's going to discuss that, yeah. So I was going to pull those two. And, yeah, I was going to pull E7 and 8 for just discussion and overview by the board attorney. And I just had a quick question on F1, really not on the things, just a little quick question. So that, so we will be, so the board, the chair will entertain a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda excluding E6, E8, and F1.
E7.
Oh, I'm sorry, E7.
E7, F1, and E8?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll offer a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus E7, E8, and F1.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, we will start with E7, Ms. Wagner and Mr. Holmes.
So in association with Assistant Superintendent Bowling, we reviewed the four documents, four contracts, two each, that were submitted by Ajax and Parish McCall. And they're basically what I might call boilerplate construction contracts. There are some differences between the two, and I guess more room for tailor making the contract, the 2019 version. And in that regard, there's some variations between the Parish McCall and the Ajax contracts. But I summarized the differences, and after discussions with Mr. Bowling, he contacted them, and I think that our bottom line is right now, we're good with moving forward to the pre-con stage right now, pre-construction stage, with the understanding that when we get to the GMP stage, that there's a couple of issues that we'd like to address. And my understanding is that Mr. Bowling has spoken with both representatives of both firms, and they're amenable to addressing those issues. I don't believe they're issues that I think it would make me feel more comfortable to have some clarification about them.
Sure.
And I believe Mr. Bowling feels the same way.
Absolutely.
And so, and I think from what I understand, that the representatives of both contractors are amenable to having that discussion and providing that clarification.
Very good. So do you have the...
I believe that covers...
There's only 130 pages if you want to read them.
I was trying. Yeah, I had had a couple of questions that I passed through to him, but if Mr. Bowling and our attorney are good with proceeding, then...
Moving forward to the next step.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then the chair will entertain a motion on both E7 and E8, and since we're basically the same.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to accept items E7 and 8.
Second?
I have a motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And on F1, I just had a quick question of Ms. Whitehurst is here or... Oh, there she is. On, you know, we approved several teacher positions. I was just curious where we are overall in the district with our teacher vacancy rate or number or whatever, however y'all calculate that. I was just...
I haven't looked at it this week, but as of last week, we were less than about 15 vacancies.
Oh, that's good. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Closing in, thank you.
All right, I'll, the chair will entertain a motion on F1.
I'll make a motion, we approve F1.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will now move into our emergency session, so I'll apparently adjourn the regular meeting. And we will start with number one, I can't tell you that letter, J1. And all these are pretty much the same, but...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve J1 Overnight Trip QI Roberts FFA 2025 Chapter President's Conference Justification Explanation Time Sensitive.
Second?
All right, I have a motion and second on J1. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. J2?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for item J2 Overnight Trip Palatka Junior Senior High FFA 2025 Chapter President Conference Justification Explanation Time Sensitive.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second on J2. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion on item J3 Overnight Trip Interlockin Junior Senior High FFA 2025 Chapter President's Conference Justification Explanation, sorry.
All right.
Second?
Motion and a second. Ms. Gilliard, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion for item J4 Overnight Trip Crescent City Junior Senior High School FFA 2025 Chapter President Conference Justification Explanation Time Sensitive.
Second?
All right, I have a motion and a second for J4. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And J5?
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion for J5 Overnight Trip for the Crescent City Junior Senior High School Volleyball Team Justification Explanation Time Sensitive.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second for J5. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, we will adjourn the emergency session and go back to the regular board meeting. We have no unfinished or new business, so I will go ahead and start with reports. And Ms. Wagner, I will start with you.
Holly, start with me. Yeah, Holly, go ahead first.
Okay, Holly, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
First, I'd just like to really reiterate my thanks to the insurance committee and the district and the, everyone that had any hand in bringing the Marathon Wellness Center and the opening. It was wonderful. I had a friend of mine who's also an employee tell me that she felt that that was the single best thing that the district had done for the employees since she worked here. So she ended up having to go and absolutely loved everything about it. I'm going to bring up again, and I think I'm going to do this until I see something happening, the intersection of 308 and Union County is a traffic hazard.
Union Avenue.
Union Avenue. And I've had several calls just this week. I was stopped by a good friend at church on Sunday. We really have to do something about that. And if it's making it a four-way stop, that's fine. I would prefer a traffic light, but we need to get with the county and iron that out. And I think that we need to do it sooner rather than later. I know we've got a whole school year, but I'd like for people to get used to a four-way stop or a traffic light before it happens, before school happens.
Mr. Chair, can I address that?
Yes, sir, Ms. Superintendent.
Help me out. I've talked to JR Newbold, County Commissioner. Do we have any information about a traffic study or what?
I'm a civil engineer who's working on that project, is actually working on a solution. Right now, they haven't brought it back to us yet, but they're working with the county to see what we can do, but we all aware of it. And one of the things that came up is the cost of road improvements. I called a few tax account, and I thought we had some money there that we could assist with that, so we're well aware of it.
And so the process is with the county is that we have to submit a traffic study first, and it doesn't matter anywhere in the county, anybody, before they can, and they'll review it and start the process. And then, you know, that'll lead to a meeting where we come to some agreement. And we do have some funding in that account. So, yeah, I'm highly in favor of that, and so we will definitely, as soon as they get it, we'll get it to the county.
Okay, and then I'd also like to congratulate QI Roberts on their passing rate for the ACE exam. I know that that's very difficult, and to have 60%, I believe, of the upcoming class already passed, that's huge for those kids, too. It's, you know, a little bit of a, you know, makes you feel a little bit better. And also, we approved the overnight travel for the Crescent City volleyball team to attend the Bell Tournament. We've been going to the Bell Tournament for quite a few years, and it's just a really great experience for the girls. It's a great team building thing. You know, I think there's fruits that come out of that that we're not even aware of. So thank you for doing that, and...
Sounds like you speak from experience.
Yes, ma'am. And that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Buckles?
Okay, I have a few things to cover. I passed out a couple of handouts that I received from Andrea Messina, who's the executive director of the Florida School Board Association, and a pretty good friend of mine. But I wanted to just go through this real quick. "I have contacted Andrea Messina of the FSBA to re-educate myself concerning board actions and responsibilities, particularly when a board member does not work seamlessly to bring focus involving the entire board to convey unity and cohesion as together we attempt to bring better opportunities for our children and the employees who work tirelessly for the future. Recently, a board member wrote a job description different from a previously approved one for a particular position. The board member did not bring the issue to the full board, and when the majority vote did not go favorably, the board member threatened consequences if staff were to do it again. The same board member recently phoned the governor's office inquiring about having a DoGE audit without bringing the issue to the full board for action. Thankfully, school is now in session, and it would not be as difficult to undertake. Issuing a blanket threat of ethics charges has taken these actions to a new level, particularly for our staff who follow past practice in preparing the agenda to comply with state and federal law. Not only does staff prepare according to Florida law, but our district contracts with NEOLA to ensure that our policies are in compliance, along with 45 other school districts in the state of Florida, such as Brevard, Polk, and Miami-Dade. Andrea Messina, who is, as we said, the executive director of the Florida School Board Association, has provided some pertinent information for each of you to peruse when you get a chance." A board chairman has a variety of things that can happen to board members or board chairman. A board chair obviously can be removed, but it's, that's not something that I'm really pushing for at this time. A board member could be censured. Censure is a formal expression of disapproval. This doesn't remove the board member from the position, but it serves as a public rebuke for actions or behavior. Florida school boards have the authority to censure those who engage in misconduct that is determined to be detrimental to the district. Ethics violations were mentioned concerning my past years in an attempt to paint me with a negative brush. However, former Florida governor and now Florida United States Senator Rick Scott thoroughly vetted all the complaints that had ever been filed against me prior to appointing me to a vacancy on the school board of Putnam County. So I feel pretty good about where I stand with that. And I know that our board chairman has had his experiences early on in his career in tough times as well. It's not a, it's not a fun rodeo out there for any of us. I believe in the three-strike rule, and fear we are heading to a pivotal point which does not build a cohesive board to serve our children, yet still disagree at times. Our staff should not fear retaliation for doing their jobs. I'm a firm believer that, I mean, maybe some of you may not agree that back in the old days, but I call it, I call it experience. Experience matters, whether it's life or death situations or educational situations. And one of the first thing I learned in education is that past behavior predicts future behavior. So with that, I'm going to close and let you guys peruse, and I just wanted to go ahead and make that announcement because some of these people that are now worried about being reported for doing something in their job, are going to soon be working, manning shelters for hurricanes and things, and their family will be at home. So it's just kind of a, it's just a really bad situation for us, and I hope we can pivot back to working cohesive, cohesively. Bring these things to, put the full board, and let's talk about it, and let's not just throw a hand grenade in the room and see who gets splattered. It's just, it's beyond, it's beyond the way we should be operating. And I could go on, but I'm not going to lecture you. I certainly don't have all the answers in the world, but I have seen this before, and if I thought master board training would change again, and I swore I'd never go through it again because I had board members in the past that didn't follow what they were taught, I would say, let's go through master board training. But that'll be up to you guys if you wanted to do that. But anyway, that concludes my remarks.
And this is from Andrea?
That is from Andrea Messina.
All right, Ms. Gilliard?
Yes. All righty. Just to want to reiterate and tie in to what Mrs. Cahann shared, the smooth first week of school, and it shows the cohesiveness of all of our schools. I don't know if you could notice how quick it was going through, but the various schools had on their matching T-shirts, and some of them were doing moves. I was first made aware of it when I saw a video clip from Crescent City and the little rap and rhyme they did. And that's the only way that we're going to get it done, because there is a book that states that a house divided cannot stand. And so they are presenting to the students a unified front, and that's what it's going to take to move us, because ever since Mr. Kasim came and spoke with us, it has been in the back of my mind, and we don't want to lose focus of why we're here. And that's for our children, to educate them and to make sure that we bring up that bottom quartile, those that we declared we wouldn't leave behind. We are making great strides and doing great things, and I just want us to continue in that vein. The next thing I want to mention, going through my mail, I stumbled on a virtual tour of Crescent City Elementary, Crescent City Middleton Burney, the new school that's being built, and Mrs. Pickens was a part of it. The administration at Middleton Burney, I saw Tina Gilliard and Mrs. Yolanda Brady and some others, and a great tour. And from the little time that we had been there with them, the last, yeah, topping, it's awesome. The next thing, who we play for partnership, Mr. Superintendent did mention that at our grand opening, and how crucial this thing is for our students, that ECG heart screening. We don't know. We just don't know, and we're taking every necessary precaution, and not only that, availing to the parents and the students, the opportunity to find something prior to it becoming something major. And so at this point, I'm really talking to the parents. On this case, don't let the child decide. You, as the parent, step up and say, if you're going to play sports, you're going to have it done. And even if you're not going to play sports, because sometimes these are what we can call our silent killers, so take advantage of that. And the final thing, the Wellness Center grand opening, which Mrs. Pickens started out with, just phenomenal, and the hard work that went into it, the leg work, the blood, the sweat, the tears, and everything that went into it. As you said, your coworker said, it's going to make the difference. It's saying what you all have been voicing throughout, we want to keep our employees healthy so that they could do what they need to do, and not only that, make it cost-effective for them. Mr. Chair?
Ms. Wagner?
So again, I also attended the ribbon cutting at the health center, and I think everybody's very excited about it.
Yes.
I have not gotten, set up my first appointment yet, but I do plan to. And it's, for me, being on the far side of this county, it's actually not terribly, you know, it's not on the other side of Palatka for me, so it's actually fairly convenient to those in my area. It's beautiful, and the staff was wonderful to us, and, yeah, I'm very excited about it. And the, you know, kudos to the insurance committee. I'm on it, but these guys are, they go in, they do deep dives on everything, and I'm amazed at the knowledge that they have already on that board. Of course, it's a very exciting time with the start of school, and, you know, we do want to remind everybody to stay calm during the hectic times. Someone in my office has already dealt with, you know, it's a little bit of a commotion at the beginning of the year, but it's so far, it looks like everything's going smoothly. And I did want to, well, also, I wanted to say thank you to Sandy just for being our board chaplain. I appreciate every prayer that you give for us, and it's a wonderful, it sets just a wonderful tone for us. We may not always abide by that tone during the meetings, but we certainly have the best start I can imagine for any board in Florida. And not to address too much of Mr. Buckles' items, but honestly, I don't recall a couple of things that you said quite the same way, but I understand your position, and I think that experience such as yourself, I mean, that's one of the biggest benefits of your position over there, is you have that experience. And I certainly respect that, and the way, you know how things have gone in the past. Everyone on this board, other than pretty much myself and Mr. Leary, I guess, have experience within our system here. I certainly don't. I've been learning as I go and continue to, and I don't want to personally, I don't want to ever put down what's been done or your experience that you bring. But I also do think we all have to keep an eye for new ideas and disagreements. You know, we've disagreed on other things, whether we vote similarly on those, but new ideas, fresh sets of eyes do help drive us forward. Your point is well taken as far as, you know, having cohesiveness, but I, I think honestly, and I'm going to go home probably this evening and re-watch it, I have not re-watched our last board meeting, but I didn't hear what you were saying as threats. At least I took it differently, and I'm very cautious with language, being an attorney. I know that he had mentioned consequences, and that was questioned. I took that to mean if, you know, if I do something wrong in any sense, you know, there's always going to be consequences for any act... always going to be consequences for any action. I didn't take that as a threat. And I'm certainly, I'm certainly sorry if anything I had ever said came across that way as well because, but I didn't take it that way. And I'm just saying, understand that things often are maybe misconstrued. And I would hope that our board members all would at least give each other the grace to perhaps maybe misspeak a little bit on certain things as we're discussing these things and not be overly harsh in our rebuttals. But that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wagner. So briefly, and I don't want to get into debate, just, just clarify a couple of things. First of all, the job description I wrote was sent to the human resource director as it is because the superintendent submits job descriptions under the statute ten, 10-11 or 10-12. And, and so there was no reason for me to bring it to the board because that's not my, my job. Number two, I've never called the governor's office or any other entity either before or after and have never threatened anybody. And as board chair, I just run the meeting as a board member, irregardless whether chairman or not, you know, I'm going to follow the statute. And, you know, the final thing is that we did exactly as the statute says. The position came to the board. It was voted in favor by three, two, and it's a done deal. It's a moot issue. So with that, I'd like to thank the board, the superintendent and the board attorney for all your kind words, your cards, the flowers, and the support that you've given me over the last two weeks with, with the passing of my mom. And with that, I'll, Mr. Superintendent, you're recognized.
Uh, Mr. Holmes, I'm sorry.
I have nothing.
All right. Superintendent.
Thank you. Just a reminder, and we'll meet again as a board before then, but on your calendar, college and career night at Palatka High School on September 18th.
Yes, sir.
And it gets bigger and bigger and should be even better this year. That's begins at six o'clock and finishes at 7:30 PM. I love doing podcasts, I really do. We, we release one every Wednesday. And as of yesterday, we actually, we recorded two of them. Kimberly Simmons, our lead therapist is in the room and actually had her and a couple of, well, another one of your therapists. And we actually talked about the Resilient Roots program where they actually have done some family therapy this past summer and the summer before. And, you know, I think that's really out of the box kind of thinking. It really maybe addresses some of those things that might happen at home that can help the student be more successful at school. So kudos to him and your department. I also have done one on CPR. We recorded one on CPR. And as you know, Diana Drew's stepdaughter actually helped save a life using CPR that she learned in one of her classes. And I thought that was pretty cool. And you can watch, watch the other video and, but it's really moving. And I think it just talks about how the things we learn in school can really save lives and really impact our community. So that, that's a real good one. And we also recorded one last week or the week before on fentanyl. And as you know, fentanyl is one of our newest deadly drugs out there. And I, I learned a lot from interviewing the, the people in the podcast. But what's scary is they said enough fentanyl on the tip of a pencil lead is enough to kill a human being. And when, when people take drugs, especially drugs, they don't know the origin of it. It can contain that. And, you know, and I just urge everybody to watch that. It's very educational and it's really scary what our kids are subject to. So just want to point out that these are real informational podcasts and hopefully people will watch that and be a lot more safer. Football season starts officially this Friday night. And we had a couple rainouts and lightning outs last week, but hopefully the weather's going to permit and have a great kickoff to the season. No pun intended. But last thing I want to do is click, first of all, school board workshop. Susan just reminded me on our district data. And this is the same, this is right before the next board meeting, September 9th at two o'clock. Just make sure you have that on your calendar. I'm sure Susan will send out a reminder about that. And speaking of workshops, I know we had a budget workshop and I wanted to get some clarification. And Jonathan and I and our staff were talking about it earlier. And I want to make sure we provide the level of information that was talked about in the board workshop. And Jonathan, feel free to come up and, and ask some questions. I know, and it had to do with the bu, the budgets of the departments. So Jonathan, you want to elaborate and let's get some clarification from the board so we can provide that at the budget, budget hearing?
Yes, sir. So the clarification, and, and just so you guys know, I went back and watched the hour and a half video after one o'clock today between this meeting. So at the end of the meeting, I said, so to clarify, you're wanting, like basically clarifying what you wanted from the budget. And the response was you wanted the district budget summary and the district budget totals available on the website and to y'all. Today alone, three of you have specifically asked about the line item detail of the budgets. So I need to know which of those, like how, we can do line item, we can do the totals that you asked for, saying HR, you're getting $200,000 and that's their budget. We can do the line item to the object line. So one of the examples was object line 379 or 390, other purchase services. They, they may budget 50,000 into that line. Now, I don't think you would want to get into granularity of what all they're looking to put in there because as Laura brought up an example in that meeting, they may go with this product or they may go with that product, but they're putting the money there for a product. So they may not know what the actual line item specificity is yet. So are you guys wanting the budget summary and the department totals? Or are you wanting to go down to like how much they're putting in each object line? Not including salaries and benefits because we can provide that to you, but that's going to really give you way more data than you may want to do what y'all were talking about doing.
Ms. Pickens, you want to go?
I would, I think I would prefer by the department. I don't, I don't want every little line item. I want by department. So, and I did write line item in my email. So, but I, I think just districts, I mean, not districts, but departments.
I think that's what I would like, at least initially.
Okay.
If that's, if that works for you, for y'all. I mean, it's, I, I don't, I want to start on the bigger scale. And if I need to work down smaller, then I can talk to you.
Okay. So Jonathan, help me, line item to me would be like in a department, travel, consulting, you know, the big line item. It's not a breakdown as, you know, we're consulting on X, Y, and Z. This is our money we're spending on consulting, which we get every board meeting. We approve those contracts and everything else. Just is that, is that what you're?
Since when I say line item, yes, that's what I'm talking about. So for example, travel, let's say I travel throughout the year to four different conferences. You're not going to see that, but you don't want to see the money I have in travel for the total of, yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, just, just the totals. Yeah.
So that's the line item detail I'm, I'm referencing.
Good. I think we're all in agreement.
So you want line item total?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We have a consensus, is that what I'm?
I don't know if I, if I want to find something out, I'll go find it out. That's no big deal.
I just want to make sure just so we, we can clarify because I heard this.
Yeah, so I.
What's easiest for you? For us to make them?
So I mean, the easiest always going to be giving you the big number up top. That's what we have to do by the state. But we, that number is, I mean, we've already cut down the departments. So we already know what the departments are getting. As far as their line item in the context we're talking, we don't have that. We would have to, and I had my assistant start working on this earlier. She started preparing an email just in case, depending on what is decided here today, to ask departments to prepare that because we don't know that information yet. Like they did put in a comp plan for their original budget request, but when we cut them, that's kind of out the window because now they got to figure out what can we actually do. So we can do that, but that will take longer. We will have to get all the departments to submit something to us to then turn over to you guys. Right now, I can go ahead and give you the department, well, not literally right now, but today I could probably give you the department totals.
The department totals is the lump sum amount that the department gets, correct? And so your mom in her, before, in her last budget thing, she did give us a, a line item breakdown. That didn't go, you know, just had a budget, you know, category really under the department budget. And it just, you know, it was very informative. There wasn't a breakdown of everything under that line item. It was just a line item, here's the amount and what, what the title of the, of the, what the funding was, was going to.
There, I can run a report that sits there and gives the breakdown for what's in every object code. I can go ahead and do that, but it won't be accurate because we've already cut those departments. So we may have left 100,000 sitting in this object code, but now that department's saying, oh, well, we're not going to spend anything on that because we don't have the money to. He cut us here, so we're going to put it somewhere else.
So now that we've set the, the millage, basically, I mean, we can go down and obviously I, I guess that's not going to be an option. They should have, they should know the money that they're going to get. Or you should, you know, when you allocate to the department, here's, you know, your allocation for the, the 25, 26 school year, you know? And don't they already have the line from what they did last year? I mean.
Well, they, they can pull the information they have last year. They don't know their totals this year yet. I have verbally said several times, we haven't given it to them. I have verbally said several times, I've cut every department back to at least what they spent last year. But.
When would they, so when would they get that amount where they start working with it before the, before our next budget adoption millage?
I mean, if they reached out and asked, we would give it to them. We don't, we don't necessarily, we don't give it to them, but we don't withhold it from them. So they, we can let them know in an email tonight. I mean, that's no big deal. It's just, they know they can only spend 50%. And so they're not going to spend their entire budget in the first month and a half of school.
Understand. Yeah, to me, and, and the statute requires, I don't know, I think Mr. Holmes was going to send it to the board, that it has to be, you know, for our citizens to see, you know, be able to go online and look at it and explainable. To me, just lump sums doesn't really give you the full picture of, of what the money is doing within those individual departments. I mean, obviously transportation is very different than ESE and that type of thing. So if you just, you know, and I know they have line items, but under those line items, there's, you know, different things. But just the line item itself, you know, will tell us, you know, this is what that money's going for.
And we can do that. It's again, consensus of the board. I will say from the three of you talking earlier on this, when I stepped up, it sounded like you said total. And it sounded like you may have also said total, and then it kind of changed to line item. So whatever.
I said it from day one, I wanted the line item. I can't evaluate a budget.
And I will, I will say, when I went and talked to our team earlier, I was saying line item too, because I watched the meeting back. You said line item several times and almost every time you brought it up. But at the end, when I clarified, line item wasn't said. And that's why I wanted to clarify today what was actually wanted.
Everybody's using different words for possibly the same thing, but, I mean, I would prefer not just one lump sum for each department.
So you want line item too, then that's showing object.
I think there's varying degrees of line items. I mean, you can have a line item and then you can have 500 things.
Yeah, we don't want the 500 things. We want the total of each line item. That's, that's what I'm getting.
That's what, yes, that's what I'm, not just one lump.
Me too.
The department gets 100,000. I'd like that they get this much and this is generalities of how they spend it in the different areas.
Yeah. So if that's a consensus of the board, we can do that. That will take a few days. We will have to ask all the departments to give us what those are projected, of course, because things do change. They have the ability to transfer funds. If they decide they're not going with a product, and so they have extra money, they can move it over and buy more paper for their printer. So it'll, it'll be projected for them, but we can, we can do that. We can get the email sent out no later than tomorrow and ask all of them to report by, report back to us.
September 11th, I think is, is that correct?
September 11th.
September 11th. Well, that's a Thursday for our budget hearing. There's a meeting two days before it, I believe.
Yeah, it'd be nice to, be good to have it, be good to have it. Tony is trying to get the board meeting.
It would be nice to have before the board. Until September 11th, and you put the switch in Skyward, you can send me an email, but I'm not going to be able to tell you what I'm going to have in each line item because I don't know what you've cut yet.
We will, yeah, that, that's correct. So what, what, so part of the.
Until September 12th, we're, I'm not going to be able to give you that.
Yeah, it, that was part of the thing that came up earlier is it won't, and that's why I said projected earlier, because it will not be accurate. Because up until September 11th, well, up until September 10th, or whenever the, we finally get done, we're constantly making changes on the finance side that maybe something happened. For example, I got an email yesterday that, from the auditors about an issue, and we're going to have to charge 87,000 back to general fund from last year. So now we got to rebalance at 87,000. So that's got to come from somewhere. But before that, we had a check come in that gave us extra money for last year. So we still have to rebalance it. So that'll change maybe a department here, there a little bit. So I can give you the information. It will not be completely accurate. It'll, and from the departments, it'll be their projections, but we can get that to you. Keep in mind though, it will not be completely accurate.
But the projections all have to, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, based on then what Mrs. Whitehurst said, it looks like maybe after the 12th, and we set it for our next meeting, maybe September 11th, if we are wanting the most accurate one, maybe receive it after the September 12th.
Yeah, the September 11th is when it's finalized.
Right, but Tanya mentioned the 12th, Mrs. Whitehurst mentioned the 12th.
Yeah.
Right.
But that's our meeting. Our budget meeting is the 11th.
And see what's really important here for my budget.
Yes. That, that's the catch there. You won't have a full accurate picture until the 12th. So the 12th, I can give you the same exact information with the accurate numbers. And actually, probably, I don't know how soon, but once they see their numbers in Skyward, they'll probably start doing budget transfers. They've got to start doing budget transfers anyways because they got to cover the stuff they're buying now and make sure those, those expenditures are covered. So we can give you a report now that will not be 100% accurate and will just be projections of what departments say they're going to spend or what lines departments are going to spend. And then afterwards, when they're done transferring anything, we can give another report of the same thing, showing their true budget and their, again, projected line expenditures.
That's, you know, I mean, I've never seen it done that way in, in school district. Budgeting is very, you know, different than any other agency. But by that time, we've already made the decision, the budget's adopted and, and the millage rate. And so I just don't, it's just hard to really evaluate things, you know, without having those line items. I mean, we can look at what they had last year. You're basically saying that they're not going to get any more, right? Is that what you were?
Well, their, their number won't go up unless we get a really nice check for, that's dated back to last year. So yeah, there, so if I sit there and I'll use a $200,000 to HR example I did earlier. If that's the number they have now, chances are they're either going to be at that number or slightly below it based off, based off our balancing. I don't, I, if 87,000 is the biggest hit we take that I just got emailed about yesterday, then across the 20 departments, we said that we had at the last meeting, we can spread that out, obviously. So it won't affect any department greatly. But that's pretty much the only place we can cut right now is departments unless you're looking at ending a program or something.
I'm not, I mean, I don't know what I'm, you know, until you look at it, you can't make any determination. I, you know, I didn't know of any thing that I'd want to cut department wise, you know, but just looking at a lump sum doesn't give you the whole picture. And, and it, you know, and I think it, and for, certainly for transparency with, you know, the general public and taxpayers, it's, you know, we need as much transparency as we can get. So it just seems every budget I've worked with, local, state and federal, private sector, you know, all of that was, you had before you had to make the final decision on the budget and, and the millage rate. But, and, and I could have swore your mom did that for us, but maybe I was.
Well, we can, again, we can give you something that's projected to be what it's going to be, but based off balancing, it still could change. And that's where the accuracy part of it comes in.
Yeah, I mean.
So we can give you what you're asking for to some extent.
There's going to be a change. I mean, that. Change, I mean, that, that's just part of it. But if you can give us, you know, you know, as accurate as we can get up until that timeframe.
We can do that.
I think that, that would suffice, certainly would suffice for me.
Yeah, so that, and we can do that, and if that's consensus of the board, we will do that.
You're good with that? You picked Ms. Pickens?
This is not on that topic, cuz I think we are in agreement. But do our numbers look up district-wide or?
As far as.
Like student?
We're actually, next Friday is our student, our 10-day count, this Friday?
Our 10-day count.
Our 10-day count's this Friday, so we'll have a good view of that. So I actually haven't studied the sheets yet. I don't know if anyone else can comment on it or not have.
Normally, we're down till after Labor Day and it, you know, then people start sending kids back to school. I don't understand why that is, but traditionally been that way.
And we'll look at it, we're gonna look at it Friday and, you know, try to, anybody, any vacancies or whatever, try to balance that out with, based on the enrollment and that type of thing. So we should know more after Friday.
And we're still trying to fill positions, right? Those 15 positions?
Well, right now, Tonya, do you wanna, right now? Yeah, wait till the 10-day count.
And then, and then, then go forward.
Right. Then we'll make the decision then.
Schools that are down, they, we say, we used to call it lose a teacher, but that teacher's shifted to another school where their enrollment is up. Yeah.
Correct. Okay, so I want to just clarify. So I'm gonna, I'll make sure the email is sent out tomorrow, asking departments to give us, we will give the departments their current total. We will ask the departments to give us object line item detail. So not all the 500 lines, but the total at the top of that line item detail. The next board meeting's the ninth. How, how soon before that do you want it? Just so I know, y'all have plenty of time to review.
What, I mean, something that, that's workable for y'all.
Okay, I mean, we can ask that the departments get it to us by the end of the month and then.
Friday before that, I mean, that gives us the whole weekend to look at it.
Okay. That sounds good.
I mean, I don't anticipate it taking a long time. I mean, you can go through this pretty quick.
Yeah, it should, it should be fairly quick, so, all right.
Okay, we good? All right.
Thank you.
Anything else come before the board? All right, we will stand adjourned.